Okay, it is September 24th and I am calling the City Council Workshop to order on, or at 4:00 PM. Do we have any public comments?
No, sir. No, ma'am.[23.12][23.12](Laughter)
Phew, well, that broke the ice.[26.72][26.72](Laughter)
That was so hard to break, wasn't it?
Okay, then, well, I'll move to the presentation 2A regarding the city's proposed priorities for the 89th Texas Legislative Session. Please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.[43.73][43.73](Laughter) And the rest of council. This is, I love this time of year, even though we're, you know, before, kind of, you can argue we're right before a storm because the session's four or five months away, I guess, four months away, and it gets busy and it adds something to all of our schedules, but it's really, I like sometimes how the sausage gets made. So, this is a really quick presentation, and if I can just impress anything on you right now, this is your program. And so if you see something in here that we've, you know, that needs to be reworded or that we didn't add, let us know. And the other thing, too, is it's fairly general. It just gives us, really, bottom line, it gives staff time, and the mayor, frankly, time to go ahead and send a letter perhaps, or, you know, tell some committee or TML even, hey, this is our, this is our interest here, and they have the authority to do that. You all are now giving them the authority to do that. So, again, 89th Texas Legislative Session, which will kick off in January, it starts January 14th, but bills can start being filed November 11th. And so you'll hear some of this, those that are going to the TML sessions next week, or two weeks, you'll start hearing, hearing this. TML has already adopted a program. It's very similar to each year, and you'll hear some of that information when you go to that conference. They're scheduled to adjourn in June, but I don't know, perhaps gone are the days that they can get everything done between January and June. And so, like last time, there were at least, I think, three special sessions, and so, you know, I don't know how that'll go. 2023 session, just to give you a little bit of insight, approximately 8,000 bills were actually filed, 1,800 of those impacted cities in some form or fashion. And so that's, I really give kudos to TML and its staff because we don't have to sit here as the city of Curville and read every bill, or even just read those that we think will impact us. They do that job for us, and every week they, we get a legislative update, that they call it, and kind of let us know that this stuff is percolating out there. You all know that our senator is Pete Flores, and then we'll elect our House rep in November during the general election. This, I don't mean to, you know, have you all memorize this, and there's certainly some lines that are obscured between the two sides, but this is basically how bills become law in the House and the Senate. And they're fairly similar, but you can tell there's some differences. And my point in putting this up is, it really takes a lot to get a bill passed. I'll talk about this in a second, but we had a bill that we felt very strongly about that actually our state rep, Representative Murr authored for us last time, and he just told us, this is probably going to be the first year that it gets to the committee, and that it'll probably have a hard time getting out of the committee, and he was right. So, our proposal is to file, get that bill filed again, and I'll talk about that in a second. Our priorities, and this is all spelled out in the resolution and the program, we want to protect home rule authority. We think that that ought to mean something. We have a charter that was voted on by our voters here and has been amended, I think, 11 or 12 times, most recently in May. And so we think that there's value in that, and there ought to be, you know, deferral to that, if you will. And again, home rule authority ought to mean something, local rules ought to mean something, and so we're, we try to be very protective of that. That has been pierced, I would say, this will be the, probably at least the fourth session or the fifth session where they've really kind of gone into our, what we think is normally home rule authority and really have taken it away or done stuff to it where it doesn't mean as much. Annexation, for instance, we really don't have any authority to annex unless someone requests annexation. So, predictable revenue, that can, that can mean a couple of things. One, they certainly add more and more exemptions for property taxes, and our feeling is that before they do that, they ought to really get an idea of what that means. Because, you know, you can add more exemptions, but you're decreasing the revenue, the stable revenue that cities get, and then you're all, in your shoes, at the local level are faced with perhaps increasing rates. And so, we think that's important. Hot uses, that's the hotel tax. They do seem to expand that use. That's all about heads and beds, spending money that hotel guests pay, and using that money to bring actually in more people. And so we obviously use it. Arcadia is a big user of that. Our festival in the park for July is a big user of that. We think parks, we have a great park system. We hear it all the time, oh, my gosh, I can't believe you have this park system in the middle of town. It's a nice way to get out of San Antonio for the day, come up, go to the park, have a meal. And so we think the, perhaps there are ways to even expand the uses there. Groundwater, obviously, is a big, big issue. You all know how big of an issue it is for us. We think that the, frankly, the state can either do one of two things. They can either get involved in it, which they haven't really done, or they can get involved in a way that really may impact us negatively, and so we have to watch that. And as you can imagine, this is a big issue across the state. I just read, I think it was in the July edition of Texas Monthly, and it was all about water, and how it's really becoming, it's, I mean, it's the new oil, but that's probably 20 years ago plus, you know, and so it even becomes more and more precious every, every year. Parks, again, we have a good park system, anything they can do to help that. They do tend to take money out of their general fund and put it into their, into their, into the department that will give us grants for our parks, and we think that's good. We hope to utilize some of that for River Trail expansion. Rock and mining operations, that's, you know, aggregate and concrete manufacturers. We think there's, there's health risks with respect to that, and that they ought to give cities, not only within the city, but perhaps within its ETJ, more authority to say, hey, where those can and can't go. We went through that a few years ago with just down 173, both 173 and 27 into Center Point. And mental health, that's, that's a huge issue. Frankly, I mean, we have this great facility here, and just, there seems like there could be more interconnectedness between their role, their scope of services, and what, what the city, frankly, we need and the county needs. And frankly, they'll tell us at times, you, we don't have any beds for y'all. And so, Chief will attest to this, sometimes they're, they're in the car, they're going to Sagin, they're going to Big Spring, they're going to Midland, and it's two officers, and it's the whole day, as you can imagine. So, hopefully, they'll, we'll break loose some good law with respect to that topic. City involvement, again, we don't review all the bills, but we certainly review those that, that TML sends to us or that we get wind of through our reading of newspapers. We do communicate with our senator and representative. Last time, we met with Senator Flores a couple of times, as we did with Representative Murr, and it got to a point, I don't recall about Flores's office, but Murr's office would call us and give us a heads up, like, hey, we just got wind that this bill's going to be filed, you all may want to get a copy of that. And so they were both very helpful. Participate in hearings, there may be a hearing that we want to go to, and we'll try to get on the list to speak at that, or even just submit comments before the hearing meets. And of course, every step of the way, when we react like this, or we push stuff out like this, we would give you all an update that we're doing that, and why it's important.
Real quick, Mike. So I've spoken with Charlie McElveyn at the chamber, and they've obviously just announced their new CEO. The chamber is also expanding their community or government affairs committee, so it's actually going to have more folks in, more local community leaders outside of the chamber, so we can, again, kind of as a community tackle more issues, you know, not just local, but some of the regional, you know, things as well. So they've expanded their government affairs committee.
Huh. Well, there was, there actually was a slide at some point about using local partners, and the chamber's been very helpful. But anyway, that's, that's really all I have. The resolution and the program are both on the regular agenda, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mike?
I've been putting myself to sleep reading all of it.[654.16][654.16](Laughter)
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
And Madam Mayor, we did have a speaker request form come in.
Okay.
For item 2B.
Okay. Okay, we are there now. Would we, would we like the speaker to come up now?
Bill Rector.
Thank you, Honorable Counsel. I want to start off by thanking Delane. She encouraged me to go and see Reagan this last weekend, and it was a great movie, but it taught me how important words and resolve are. And we're going to be talking about trees this afternoon, and you're going to be resolving to help us save some of those trees in Curville. Trees are very important to our community. That's why people come here. That's one of the reasons that we're prosperous. Trees started this community. The first people who came to Curville came here because of the trees, and they're still coming. But we have lost a lot of our trees. We have lost a lot of them because of oak wilt, and we've lost a lot of them because of destruction. We can't do much about the oak wilt. We found that out. But we can do something about intentional destruction of our oaks, and you're poised to do that today, and we appreciate you for that. There are developers that have bulldozed down oak trees. We've seen that recently at Hobby Lobby. We've seen that at Whiskey Springs. And if we don't stop that, we will continue to see mass losses of trees. So that's one area that we need work on. But there is, when I was on council, and that's a long time ago, there was something that kept me awake at night, that I lost sleep over, and I suspect you do that also. It's not the comments that are made from people that sit in the audience out here. It's not letters to the editor that call you Democrats.[788.04][788.04](Laughter) It is the unintended consequences of things that you pass that show up that you don't expect to be a problem. And there is a potential problem with unintended consequences with this. I understand that there's a possibility that we may leave out individuals from this ordinance. And one of the problems that's going to raise its head is developers are going to realize that if I can get those trees bulldozed down before I buy the property, I don't have to worry about the expense of preserving a beautiful majestic oak in the parking lot, or a 200-year-old pecan tree in the parking lot because it's already gone. That may be one of the problems that we have to deal with. It also will make individuals, homeowners, property owners, make it easier for them to take trees off of their property that are sick or perhaps dangerous. If they can come to the city, and the city can send an arborist, and it says, yes, that tree is sick, that tree needs to be removed, that takes the onus off of that property owner. When his neighbors point to him and say, why did you take out that beautiful tree? The city said that I could do it because they examined it and saw that it was sick and needed to come out. That's a help that we can be to those people. Also, we would find that individuals would be able to come to the city, help them take out trees that are dangerous or sick, and then we would not have social media condemnation over doing that because it wasn't a single person that made that decision. It was actually a team that included the arborist and included the city to help them make the decision to take out that tree. And that, I think, would help our citizens a lot, and it would smoothe over a lot of misunderstanding about the reason that trees are taken out. Thank you very much and appreciate your work on this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're just going to be discussing this ordinance. Go ahead, Drew.
Martin, can you pull up the PowerPoint? There we go. Additional workshop, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. The council voiced some concerns, so I went back and looked at a few amendments. Again, this is part of the comprehensive plan to consider tree preservation ordinance. So I'll just go over some of the recommended amendments and kind of get council's feedback. The previously recommended, we were looking at commercial and residential subdivision developments, and in the ETJ for removal, preservation, pruning restrictions, and the permit requirements within the ordinance. Oak wilt restrictions, and all professional tree care landscaping companies shall obtain a permit prior to trimming or removal of any trees. And some of the comments from council. Amendments to that would be for new and resident, new commercial and new residential subdivisions within the city limits, not including the ETJ. And existing platted or developed lots would be exempt. The permitting of, or permitting and trimming and pruning regulations will be within the city limits, again, not in the ETJ. And that trimming is not required a permit. There will still be trimming and pruning regulations, particularly as it pertains to the oak wilt and the spread of those diseases, and also, again, not applicable in the ETJ. Some of the others, exemptions, again, the hazardous conditions from storms or diseased trees, that is allowed. The permit would be required for new and residential development, new commercial and residential developments. And again, just clarifying, the tree pruning does not require a separate permit, and the regulations will be enforced as necessary. So that, a lot of that will go through education programs with the city and working with our tree companies, making sure they're aware that those tree trimming and pruning are regulations, and it would basically be reactive enforcement if there are any issues that And again, on the jurisdiction, removing the ETJ regulation, enforcement and the variances would not change. And with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Well, yes. Okay, the enforcement, where is that on your, I have the presentation, I'm just trying to find it. I think I have, is it page 5 of 8?
Let me check. Section 12.
Okay, I see it, okay. You know, I think, I guess I feel like this whole project should be baby steps. I hate to say it. I love to jump in full, full body and tackle these things head on, but I think the enforcement part scares people that have been talking to me. So I'd rather not even, I don't even talk about enforcement because we don't have, we don't have anything yet in print to say what we would be enforcing. And I like the idea we've, we've kind of changed from this overall tree ordinance to everyone to just commercial, new commercial and new residential. Because in my opinion, the biggest challenge we have right now are those, like Whiskey Springs and Tybee Commons and Hobby Lobby, if we'd had something before, they were clearing that property. That's where I have seen the most damage and the most unneeded clearing. And so I'm, I'm still focused on that, and I, I don't know about the enforcement of pruning and, it just kind of gets ahead of me because I'm not quite to the residential current tree owner. I'm still focused on the new development, which even if that's all we did right now, would do a lot. And I think it would start to get people more aware that we are trying to save these trees, we're trying to help you save your trees, and be more on board when we come back with more possible amendments to, okay, so now you're an existing residence with a 200-year-old tree, and you need some help. Let's see what we can do. Or, you know, you want the help. Where do I start? Maybe the city can be that for them with an arborist. It's just a lot to, to sign up for as a package right now. So that's just my, my feelings about the whole package right now.
Okay.
I want to do something, but I don't want to go too far into the river until I know how deep it is, if you know what I mean.
Right.
I'm kind of in that boat. I somehow thought I went through all the material, but I, I didn't see the actual.
I don't think I was here for it either, but somehow.
Well, I don't have time to look at it now, but I need to digest that a little bit. And I think it's, these sound like good improvements. I think Dr. Rector brought up a good point about maybe some existing property, I don't know, if it was already zoned residential or something, and it couldn't be, you know, it would, oh, that clearing thing, how would you do that if they tried to clear it before they get it zoned or before they build or whatever? But that's, I'm not sure how often it has come up. But I'm, I'm concerned mostly, as I said really in the beginning, is the new developments and, and the commercial, and so, I'm not, I don't think we have much of a problem from neighborhoods of people. People go at great lengths to save the trees as a rule, and so I haven't been too much in favor of creating too much bureaucracy around that, that part of the issue, but, but we, the trees are valuable, and I certainly want to save trees, and we don't want to be just mowing them down. And so, but I, unfortunately, I missed the changes. I mean, you're getting through them real quick there, but I can't absorb all that. Right, right. I apologize, I don't know how I missed.
I will, I'm jumping in that boat with both of y'all, too. I don't, I don't mind swimming, but I don't want to drown either. It's, you know, trees are very valuable. They're a wonderful thing to have in your neighborhood, in your city. I look, there's very few lots left in the neighborhood where I live, and there's one that has a beautiful oak tree right in the middle of the lot. This is like, well, you're either going to do like one guy did and build your house around the tree so he didn't cut down the oak tree, or you're going to have to get rid of this oak tree so you can build your home. I mean, it's, this neighborhood's been, this is the 70s at least, I don't know, River Hill's been there for a while. Now, the other thing I look at is, you know, we're fixing to have a new development come in at the corner of 534 in Cypress. What are we going to do there? You know, it's, I don't, you know, save as many as you can, you know. I've seen some get cut down inadvertently, or so they said, they were, oh, we weren't supposed to cut those trees down. And they were beautiful, huge oak trees, and they left a goofy little pine tree that doesn't even look like it belongs here, but, you know, on my decision, it was just kind of a kick in the gut when, when we saw it. But something does need to be done, we just have to be very careful how we do it, and, you know, protect, you know, you get in a very complex situation when you're talking about trees, property ownership, what outweighs what, and what can we do to a property owner. You know, definitely agree with, like Mr. McKinney said before, you know, we don't have to have a permit to go out and trim and prune, so thank you for that. But I'm all for that. I love the bigger trees, and whatever we could do to save the big ones, we definitely need to, because we know how long it takes to get that big.
Anyway, I think we made progress, so let's, if we can digest this a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Maybe, Drew, you could come back with a suggestion on how we could do what Dr. Rector said, which would be, prior to the new developer coming in, let's say, who might own the Whiskey Springs land prior to it being sold, but knowing that's the objective, was to sell it to a developer who would need to cut some trees, but be, you know, diligent about the ones you select. When does that process start? Maybe we could, if you could, you know, like, perhaps suggest, when is a good time to preempt that from happening?
Right.
Or process that we could.
The way this would be, the way this is currently drafted for undeveloped property, they have to get a permit to remove the trees. So whether it's zoned for commercial or residential, before they start any kind of clearing, they would have to get a permit for that. So in the case, Whiskey Springs does have a grading permit, which we currently have in our ordinance. That's more based off of drainage than it is, obviously, the trees, because it does allow for grading. But in this case, they would have to actually do a tree survey and show, identify what trees they're keeping before they started the clearing and grading.
And when would that happen, like, like, the first thing?
Yes.
The very first thing they would do would be that?
That would basically be in their kind of checklist. They would, if they wanted to go pull a grading permit, at the same time, it would be part of the checklist, you know, for, so in practicality, they would pull a grading permit, a tree permit, they would have to do a tree study before they, we would issue a grading permit, and then that tree study would come back, and then that's where kind of the arborist or those folks would kind of, you know, play a role, and typically, tree studies would do it. They would actually, it almost is a GIS map that shows which trees they can and can't cut down, and then they would mark those trees that would be protected. And then if they said, hey, in the plating process, we need to remove those trees, that's where the mitigation would come in, or, you know, you would have to plant additional trees, you know, in that. So that's where there's a little bit more control on the enforcement pieces, because we can kind of, not control it, but you have some control within the permitting side of things to make sure that it gets done. And that's why we kind of wanted to simplify this whole kind of process and focus more on, well, in the Whiskey Springs situation, not at a, not as a result of them, but how do we simplify this process? How do we simplify the enforcement component of it and take away from existing residential?
I think the word enforcement is kind of, you know, it gets people's attention.
It's mitigation.
In not a good way, yeah.
Yeah, it's mitigation. And that's where, you know, developers typically, you know, on, and having experience in Mont Bellevue where there's tree ordinances, when you come in, you know. You know, you know that there's a tree study, you're going to go in and you're going, they're going to do their due diligence, and hey, be aware that there's a, there's a tree study that you're going to have to conduct, you know, if you're, if you're going to clear the land. You know, we, we completely know that, hey, my property, my rights, so it's a balance of limited government with a balance of conservation. So that's kind of the, the pole. And the pole is, is we're not saying you can't remove the trees, but hey, in order to preserve or conserve, you're either going to have to plant additional or provide it into a fund that the city can then take steps to plant trees in some of our parks or, or other areas that may need it. So it just, it opens up some funding opportunity, very minimal funding opportunity in this case, but it does offer some, some mitigation efforts.
Potential gap that Dr. Rector mentioned about, would have to, some property, residential property owner could bulldoze these trees, I suppose, in his house while he was at it, do something, but there may be some platted lots that are not, I just don't, I don't know if there's very many of those, or how big of an issue that is, where that's really an issue.
Right.
Or not. Where we have any pockets of places where they've got residential area platted and people would, they would cut down all the trees without consequence.
Right.
Now, and then the developer would buy it, you know, get by with it. But I don't know if that's really.
I would say that's a pretty small percentage of properties in town, as far as lots that are platted, ready to be built on, that, in the case of.
And turn, turn around and decide they're going to be commercial, they'd have to get a resolve, and there could be a lot of problem with that.
Right. Most of the lots that we would see are existing, you know, the few lots left in a neighborhood that just have not been built on. With this version, those would be exempt, so there may be some tree loss there. But generally, through the neighborhood, like was stated, the rate of removal on existing neighborhoods is so low compared to new development.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. I think for the most part, our community is very.
I think for the most part, our community is very sensitive to the landscape and keeping it and maintaining it the way that it is. And I, you know, you can tell by the line that goes down Highway 27 from K-Pub, how many people are getting free trees when K-Pub offers them. I mean, people in our community like trees, they want trees, they want the shade. And my concern is a couple of things. Number one, okay, you have a, you have a piece of land that you want to sell and there's a tree in the middle of it. And there has to be a tree study done by the potential buyer of that land. There's a cost associated with that. And is that going to be a weighing factor on whether or not he even purchases that property because of the expense associated with doing a tree study on that?
In a residential neighborhood, do you still have to do that?
Not if it's already developed and platted.
But if it's not developed?
Right.
And that, and that's kind of where the separation, you know, really what we wanted to kind of delineate from and kind of get y'all's feedback and guidance on. You know, let's just use the heights as an example. It's existing, it's platted, but you can go in and you have an undeveloped lot, five acres, you know, we'll say. Well, already you can go in and clear invasive species, which really is probably eighty, you know, ninety percent of some of these lots.
Right.
You know, they wipe it out. So the question would be is, if you're going to go build a home on that lot, you know, ideally, we're going to assume that somebody who's building in that area, somebody who's wanting to do that is going to want to try to save as many trees as possible. And we, we, I think, agree that from a residential, existing residential standpoint, we, we, we agree, you know, custom homes, whatever. So let's take Lennar as another example, you know, different style of home, you know, different, you know, different market, you know, we understand that there could be a burden, you know, placed on there. So it could be one of those things where, hey, in order for them to get the product and the housing that they want, they are going to have to clear 200 acres of land potentially. Well, this could set it up to say, look, out of all the trees that are there, maybe 10% of them would have been worth saving. But in order for us to get this market of home, you know, for, for a workforce, we understand that these are going to have to be removed or something. Well, that could be done either through, again, planting additional trees, you know, hey, you're, they're going to be required to plant additional trees per lot that are eventually going to grow, or they're going to have to pay a mitigation or waive a mitigation. So we agree that when we look at this holistically, new commercial, large scale, new residential, large scale, Whiskey Springs is an example, even with them being more custom home driven, those are going to be existing platted lots at a certain point in time, just like the Hyatt's. Once that hits, all that tree study and stuff done is really, is being bared by the developer, you know, going in there to grade and clear and all, and, and that. And I think, you know, how that goes about doing it is, do they, can they plant additional trees? How does that look? Or do they pay a mitigation so the city can plant trees in other places? We really do think that taking it off of the existing residential, I don't think we're really seeing those, those issues in other cities, you typically don't. It's the new large-scale projects that are causing the most issues. And we'll be frank, I mean, with existing residential, even if council said, hey, that's the direction we want to go, which we know y'all are not, that would be a staff burden because take the arborists out of the picture, now there's a whole level of permitting just for pruning and for cutting trees down and having to go out and check on a sick tree. There would be a staff burden or capacity on there that, that would create another fiscal impact.
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with designing an ordinance that preserves or replaces trees for new development and new residential subdivisions and stuff. But I really want to shy away from getting into the, the, you know, already existing homes and businesses, so.
Is that kind of the consensus of council?
Right now.
Would.
Yeah, I think, but we do have to keep in mind, it does raise the cost to, to the developer.
It potentially does. Now, tree studies depending, you know, so here's, here's kind of the, I guess, the counter or the rebuttal to that. We don't have impact fees here. We're not growing at a fast enough rate to have impact fees. We do have park dedication fees. And so by not having impact fees, that actually is a benefit to developers coming in. That's one less thing that they have to pay, which in most other cities, they would have a park fee, an impact fee, and potentially some other fee tacked on. So I think we could find that balance in, in what that would look like.
Yeah, well, my point really is not so much worry about the developer, but that cost gets passed on. And we know we got an expensive place to build houses as it is. So, but you made a good point about if somebody like Lennar had come in and they, and they're looking at workforce housing and we need to, we need to do that, so we may have to be a little bit lenient to, I don't know, it's something, it's hard to, but I'm, I'm in favor of the way, I think, the way I understand it now, I'm pretty much in favor of what you've done. I just want to, I just want to read it one, I, I just missed the reading I did, I'm not ready to, because you're not asking us to vote today anyway.
No, and, and so that's kind of my next question is, is would you like us to bring this back in another workshop on the next meeting with the first reading kind of tied potentially to that on, on what we've talked about tonight? Or do y'all want to keep workshopping it, you know, one more time to go through it? I, I think we're confident that we could do a, a first reading based off of the direction that we have. We can throw it into workshop just in case some further discussion needs to happen and then be ready to talk about that the next meeting.
Maybe for our next budget, next year, whatever, we could consider having a part-time or sometime contract basis arborist. Because what I see too is if we could let citizens know, we're here for you to help you maintain those trees. We're not just about, you know, finding you or, you know, punishing you for something. We would like to educate you. We would like to, so I don't know exactly what that is.
So one of the things that we had kind of tossed around with the team is actually using, you know, our local community, our, our local arborists as volunteers and kind of creating just, you know, from the city manager's side, you know, an ad hoc little group that can put arborists together, again, to educate, you know, do it. And we potentially could do that through community engagement and volunteerism. So that's kind of the path that we're looking at.
I think there was a gentleman that was here.
That's kind of what sparked that conver, that conversation was him, you know, put it this way, an arborist like us in the government, we're nerds, they're nerds in trees and they will volunteer their time to, to do those things. And we want those folks. And so I think we can really use community engagement to accomplish that goal.
Okay. All right, we good? That's a start. All right. Onto item two C, update on the A.C. Shriners House renovation project. Mr. Hornis?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So just a quick update before next month's meeting. Basically, next month's meeting, we should be, will be presenting you all with a contract for a GMP or guaranteed maximum price for marksmen contractors. We're currently negotiating the last pieces of that before they'll send over their last submission, which will come this Friday to us. And so it's been a long process. Several people in the audience here are on the board and have weathered this, many for a few more years than some, but it goes back quite a ways. We've talked about it extensively. It's not July 9th, by the way.
Wow, time flies.
I know, I know. I think I was working on two PowerPoints at the same time. Obviously, we have Curville 2050 implications for the renovations to the A.C. Shriners House and for the implementation of the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. We have seen this slide many, many times. Our updated projected costs, last time we met, was about $5.3 million. And we need that number to be $5.25 million because there was $3.25 million authorized as a, as a part of the project, the initial fundraising, and then EIC was asked for a push of $2 million to get that to $5.25 million. And so we're a little bit above. And I, I think everybody's, there's always horse trading, there's value engineering, there's a lot of things that can be looked at. And this is obviously a project that has, you know, I think if, if we put the whole wish list together for everything that was initially envisioned, it would be well above where we're at. To renovate all the grounds, to do everything to make it, I think that's going to have to be Phase Two, right? Or at least a very small part of Phase One, because the cost of the actual building renovation is going to take up a considerable amount of this budget. So this was published in the paper. This was for the bidders. Had a great meeting out on the site on the 28th of August. A lot of local folks showed interest, folks from around the state as well. Proposals were due to marksmen on September 11th. I think we even pushed that a few days. The GMP, that date was come and gone, and we have received an initial one. We've sent back out changes we'd like to see based on civil comments and a few of the alternates and a couple of conversations that we've had with them about are there other, are there ways for us to mitigate certain issues? One of them being the windows, right? So we've talked about this for a while, the windows or sash windows, right? They're old wooden windows. They're not, you know, to, in my mind, and I think everybody, most minds, the historic nature of those windows is not the key focal point of that house, right? And those windows are going to be shut. So is their value in, was their value in looking at replacing those windows and putting in new custom windows? And is there cost savings in that? They wouldn't look dissimilar too much. And again, it's not the focal point of the house is the window and the historic nature of the window. And it was brought up by some of the members of the board of HHHC. Initially, it was looked at and the, the, the contractors and the architects thought that, that number would be higher to do that. And some of the construction community came back in and they said, no, I think we can maybe have some cost savings in here if we do this. And so we had that conversation this week and we told them to go back to take a look at that, give us a better number, make sure that that makes sense, and, and look at that as an alternate that we provide into the budget. One of the, one of the other benefits to that is that one of the longer-term parts of our calendar is taking all those windows out, shipping them out to Lubbock, ending them all down, getting them refurbished the way they need to be. And what is that due to the schedule if instead of doing that, we take those windows out, make new windows and have those installed? I am hopeful that that will create some time savings, which then creates savings on our, our general conditions, which is our monthly cost to have them out there, have the trailer out there, have the utilities, all the rest of those things. And then it also would get the Heart of the Hills in there a little bit sooner. So we've asked them to explore that and they'll be getting back to us before Friday is what we're hopeful for. And we should have some, something great to present to everybody for the October 8th So where do we sit though? The GMP is going to come back at $5.25 million. And there's going to be probably $300,000 worth of contingency in there. And this is a little bit, this is not market volatility contingency like we kind of have for public safety because we're not sure how much steel would cost, we're not sure how much labor is going to be, we're not sure how much masonry is going to be like. That's a lot of the fluctuation for the new construction. This is, well, we took a, we, we tore open some of the walls and we feel pretty good, but we didn't open all of the walls. And anybody who owns an older house here knows that when you, you know, Murphy's Law is a thing for a reason. And so we have contingencies in there for that, right? And we may have to use those, but we may not. And so if we don't have to use those, we know that there's a significant amount of work that needs to get done on those grounds, right? And so if we have any excess over there, well, maybe we can put that into the landscaping budget, right? And then also the city of Curville, after we have hired Freezing Nichols to act as our design build representative, we have about $265,000 left over in our own contingency. So I say all that to say, as we start working through the process of, of this project, we don't know where that contingency will go until we get six months into it and see where we're at. And we can start to draw that down if there's any available. And at that point, we can make some determinations on where we'd like that contingency to go. But I don't think there's a scenario where the GMP would come in at less than basically our full budget right now. And with that, that DB amendment should be back to you all on the 8th. And, and we're looking forward to have marksmen and their team here as well to kind of talk through the presentation and get this project to the starting line.
What's the timeline again for completion?
December of next year, right? But I say that to say that next week, hopefully, we have an amended, you know, schedule that we can bring back that's a little different.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions or comments?
We're ready.
We're anxious.
All righty.
So next meeting.
Okay.
We'll be there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, onto two E, capital improvement project update. Oh, TD, I'm sorry, update on the public safety facility.
Y'all don't want to talk about public safety?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, it's her favorite topic.
Yes.
All right, so this is not maybe the most recent photo, but this is two weeks, two weeks old, I think, for this image. So as you can see, the, the walls are up, the steel support structures for the roof are up all the way throughout. The cladding is going on. We are, we are rocking and rolling. We are on our way with this project and, and everything is progressing. There's a lot of moving parts at this point, a lot of contractors coming in. We are still finalizing a few pieces of the design, which we're all very excited to be done with that, so we can just focus on construction because it's confusing the amount of meetings we have to have. Picking furniture is, is, I'm excited about the opportunities it presents, but I, I hope I don't have to do this many times in my career.
Don't blame you.
But I would like to highlight our staff as well as the contractors for how diligent they are being to help us value engineer as many of these things as we can. Janelle, our new purchasing agent, who, if you haven't met, she's a new hire on at the city, and she's been fantastic thus far. We sort of threw this at her and said, hey, help us make sure this all makes sense. And she has 50 other things that she's doing, but she is, she is making heads or tails of it, working well with the contractors. And so we're looking forward to finalizing all those design pieces and we can get back to the work of just doing construction. Fixtures, furniture and equipment, we are so very close. Last few pieces coming. The landscaping plan was kind of the last piece. And what great news I have to talk about tonight is that at last Thursday's UGRA board meeting, Stuart went on my behalf since I was out sick and UGRA awarded a grant to the city of Curville for a bioretention area at the public safety facility site for $29,000, which will cover the cost of the construction of the bioretention area. So it doesn't add cost for us to, to do that because I know we have add alternates that we want to include and we had to rank those. And that wasn't on the top of those, that wasn't on the top of that list for priority, right?
Where's that going to be located?
It'll be on the street side, not on Clearwater Perseo, but between the court on Monte Verde? Monte Verde? Rio Monte. Wow.
Except some of that.
This is why you need, this is why I need Google Maps. It's going to be between the court and the storage facility right there next to it. So it'll, it'll, it'll take the runoff from the front portion of the court and the side of the court building as well as the parking lot on that side because it crests between, basically between the center of the building, it crests one way and then the other. And so it'll take that area and it'll detain that.
Kind of near the, that generator?
Yes, yes, to the right of that, but right by the, it's close to the street, so it'll be out, out towards the street.
I've seen it. Yeah, I know exactly where you're talking about.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks.
Tara asked me a lot of science questions and I was really having a hard time answering. And so thankfully, we have a lot of smart people that work for us and with us to help with that.
I like the fact this is blue, even though I know that's just a construction, you know, fluke, but still.
Yes, yeah, it won't finally look like that.
I know.
Unless you want to. Unless you wanted to, Chief.
And it started out blue, it'll, you know, I'm just, it connects.
It's going to have to have some red in it.
Better blue than red, right?
Of course, Chief, Chief Maloney's not here to defend himself.
I mean, blue for police is what I meant.
All right, so as far as construction, we're on schedule. We have started to do, working through who's going to go in first, how they're going to go in, what needs to happen when the first pieces go in, because we're still going to be under construction, right? We live in the IT world, and Charvy and her team are going to have to have stuff in there, but we can't have stuff in there and not have it protected while there's 50, 100 people walking around all day, you know? And so there's a lot of coordination to make sure that we're managing that schedule appropriately. And at the same time, we're having to look at, how does everything work? Commissioning of the building. You turn on this switch and it hits this fan and this vent and this thing. And we will have a book that is thicker than thick that says, here is exactly how all this is supposed to function. And that gets to be the maintenance bible for this place.
Who's in charge of that?
Well, that's a really good question. We're, we're, we're working through a lot of things.
I just want to be really nice to that person.
Yes, yes. So.
Our team.
So our, our facility's maintenance currently is, is run through the Parks Department. And so Ethan is the supervisor of that, and he was in here helping us with some AC issues the other day. And so, but that is a big building. We're 65,000 square feet with another 5,000 square feet for that support building, so it's a lot to maintain. Y'all approved in the budget janitorial positions for half the year for this next budget to account for that facility. And then, you know, we have done as much as we can to low maintenance this project for parks to come in and mow, because it's, whether it's, whether it's low maintenance, bioretention and low impact design, or it's grass, it still actually requires about the same amount of maintenance, because you got to go in there and weed eat, or you got to go in there and mow grass. And so there's a, there's, there's a time, you know, issue that we have to work through with Ashley and her team, and so we're, we're trying to limit as much of that as we can. It's a small footprint on the property anyway, and so it doesn't have a lot of green space. A lot of it's parking in the building. So we're doing well there. All right, so do not be afraid of the budget number you see there, $45,519,000. The $45 million we have in the bond.
Yep.
Right? This is inclusive of everything, all design, all architecture, the whole nine yards, the cost of work, essentially. That's where we currently sit. We currently also sit with 3%, 3% contingency for the contractor, and we haven't drawn that down yet. We're getting close to being able to have those meetings where we can start drawing that number down and, and realizing those savings, okay? And when they get to do that, we get to do that, because as their risk goes down, our risk goes down, right? We finalize all the prices, we finalize all the last pieces of design, we get everything bought, we know where we have savings, right? So we have a million five in there. So we talked about half a million dollar loan from the city and the hope that we would pay that back, right? So we knew that we needed to get some of the alternates into the project, and we wanted to get those things in there before we got started so we could make sure we, we had those prices. We still feel comfortable that we're going to get ourselves down to that 45 number, right? But we also have a couple of those alternates that we're still looking through, right?
What's the cost for the Sallyport enclosure?
I'm still waiting on that one. I think the Sallyport is about $90. I want to confirm because it's been a minute since we, we got that, so I need to get some additional cost estimates. And so we're going to have buyout savings meetings because contractors are, are getting done. And did they utilize all of the funds that they had for their budget, or did they have some of that? So we're going to have some of that that we can claw back. And so right now.
Now, the covered parking is a big one. If there's any way we can get that covered parking, it would sure.
It started at.
For our vehicles that cost a lot of money.
So it started at a very high number.
Yeah.
And none of, well, every one of us looked at it, was like, this is insane.
Yeah.
Couldn't stand up here and justify that to y'all. Because, and not to be crass about it, but that is behind the building and behind the gates and in the back of the space, and I said, I'm not, I don't really care. I know it needs to look nice, everything's going to be new and nice, and all things new and nice, but it's not a showpiece car dealership that has, you know, cantilevered, all this fancy stuff, and it's iron and this, it's to protect an asset that we have, right? And so we've kind of pushed that to them several different times and said, no, 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 there's another way, there's another way. And so I, I think we have a good number from them for this. And so the priority that we've always gone by is that the covered parking comes first, and then the secondary piece would be the enclosure of the Sallyport. And so we're still there. There's still alternates right now, so we're still working through where we're, where we're going to get to, because we want to, I want to bring that $500,000 back to y'all and, and put that back. But I do remember saying that it might not come back.
But it might.
I'll leave that there. But we're on, we're in good shape, and, and, and everything's moving along as it should be. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions y'all might have.
I asked all mine.
I'm impressed. I mean, I, the magnitude of this amount of work makes me tired just thinking about it. So thank you for all you're doing, and this is going to be a great thing for our police.
Well, and, yeah, it's worth it.
There's a big team, and they are all working very, very hard, you know? We're starting to peel them away, you know, to work on, because we have more projects than this one. And, you know, once the engineering gets done, you know, Kyle and his team have done their piece, and now it's the building, right? And so now Aaron Barnes and his team from that take over. We've got a great part-time employee, and he is, man, I could build 100 Mikes, I would be so happy. He's kind of an old-school guy, and he is, you would be so proud of the way that you see, I mean, everybody, but Mike in particular, it's fun to watch him work, because he is to a T. You know, that nut in that bolt, that didn't look like it was supposed to be galvanized steel, it was supposed to be this, and da, 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 da. They don't mess around with him.
Awesome. All righty, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Now 2E, capital improvement project update.
All right, I gave each of you the sheet. I know it's a lot of information. I'm only going to talk about a few, but if you have other projects with questions or comments, just stop me and let me know. Want to start by talking public safety furniture? No, I'm just, that's for, that's for Mike to see if he's paying, paid attention over there. We're, we're done with furniture discussions for, for me.
He is not allowed to talk to you about furniture.
Throw that one in there. You got it in set, so I wanted to get in counseling. No, street maintenance, last meeting, you had awarded the Bennett paving for the patching and crack seal with their schedule. It's actually going to start next fiscal year. Main thing that we were striving for, after we had the software implementation, was getting in this paving season. They're looking at October 8th, starting that, so we'll get press releases out, you know, once, once we find a little, a little bit more fine tuning of the schedule of which streets are going to hit first and how they're going to do it. Subsequently, we've got the slurry seal that's coming after all that work's done, and those bids actually open tomorrow. I'll bring them to you on the 8th. And, you know, that, that work, it, it's kind of temperature sensitive, so it may be done prior to Thanksgiving. We'll just have to see how the temperature plays with, with their schedules. They've got some, unfortunately, there's only two contractors in the state that can do this work. Their schedules are booked, so it may be first part of spring of '25. So just, you know, TBD on that one as far as when the work actually gets done. They're, they're pushing for Thanksgiving to, to get all this done. Facility condition assessment, you know, Matrix Design Group had presented back in August, and we have completed that report, but we did not bring it to you for anything because we, we have a larger budget discussion. So once we get, once Julie gets the budget going, we're, we're going to talk about that, you know, probably springtime, get a little bit more assessment of, of what we truly need from, from the city's standpoint, what, you know, failing infrastructure we've, we've got to get now and how we budget for that moving forward. So, so more to come on that, but you will see it kind of disappear from this list because it is done as far as the, the report itself. But that's just going to be living on, you know, every document we have within the budget now because there's going to be projects stemming from that, so. NAP Forest Main, you know, that's the, the Long Sewer Project going from Town Creek out to the, back behind Raising Canes. They've kind of, you know, stopped a little bit. We had some complaints from folks with a lot of the weather that we had in July and August was really tearing up that road. So they've stopped the installation of the sewer, sewer main itself and have paved yesterday, I guess, let's see what today's DJ, so yesterday and today have been out there paving West Main to get some of that dust mitigation and get it, you know, get a little bit better. And so they, they will get back on, on that one. We're still looking for a October, November time, you know, timeframe for completion of the whole project going out to Walmart. The Forest Main's been done to Walmart, but, so just, that, that's why you're not seeing anything going, you know, down Loos or anything yet, because we're taking care of our residents first, so. Shriner Golf Course, you had, last meeting, Ashley had brought the renovation contract to you, so that, that work is, you know, set to, to begin early 20, you know, '25, if we can get them in here in December, we're going to. But there's also in parallel to that, we're going to have the concrete bridges. We're going to get bids on those October 9th. So hopefully, the 22nd meeting, should everything go well, she will bring that to you for that one. Same timeframe, we're, we're going to get them started December, January, get this stuff done and open by Heart of the Hills next, next summer, so. And then on, on this sheet, you'll see those split up. Right now, we just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware it's one project, but we're going to track the, the contracts differently, so. Another one that has been a bit of good news is the Tech Dot, that's a transportation alternatives project on the south side of the river by the, the hospital, Colee, Wesley, and Hill Country Drive. That one, we got very good bids in, and right now, we're, we're just waiting for Tech Dot concurrence. I may bring that to you on, on the 8th, but I don't want to bring it until we've got their concurrence moving forward, so. They're just going through their protocols and going through the checklist and everything, making sure we've got that. So once we get that in, you know, we'll bring it to you, get the construction started on that one, so. Lastly, that I have for you is the Calo Theater, and I know that's been talked about plenty. So we were actually going to get bids in tomorrow. The hope is to bring that for award on the 8th as well.
Okay.
That'll be for the HVAC and, and roof replacement, and then we've got, we coordinated the schedule with P2K on, on the closure of the theater, so.
Okay.
That's all I have. If you've got any questions, I mean, I expect it memorized already.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, seventeen, seventeen.
What can we do about that to get it going? And I say, that's probably my biggest complaint from everybody in town.
Yep.
Is the lights. And yesterday, thank goodness, people kind of knew what they were doing, because I left here, and the light changed to turn left, the green arrow to turn left on Sidney Baker South. Well, the light of Water Street was red, so all the traffic that was trying to turn left onto Water, or onto Sidney Baker was stuck right out in the middle of the intersection. Then those lights changed. Now you have 18 weavers going. It's just a mess. I mean, there's, more people say something to me about traffic and.
The lights, the signalization.
But is, is there any other, aside from the main and Sidney Baker, is there others?
Down here by DPS at Casa.
I, I know that one's been one that we've talked about.
Stuart and I have talked about that before, and we've sat through it together while we're looking at it, and, you know, 5:00 in the evening, when you're going home, or 4:00 or whenever, there's traffic backed up from 173 all the way through G Street. There's people getting in the turn lane before G Street, so if you want to go into Classic Burgers, or if you're trying to go to Texas Hill Country Bank, or wherever you want to go over there, you are not going to turn left against traffic that's going north on 16. It's just not going to happen. Or, I'm sorry, south on 16.
No, that, that's good to know, because, you know, Tech Dot controls that, but we continue to voice that, you know, we, we can definitely get on the hook for that division.
The young man that's the new engineer here was Tech Dot?
Yes, Andres?
Yes. We've talked, he is amazing. He goes, we know it, but we don't control it.
Right, yeah, that's, that's controlled out of district, but the, the more they hear about it, squeaky wheel gets grease, right?
It's just, that's my biggest thing when I saw that.
I don't go that way.
Well, you should try it sometime.
Well, that's why I don't go that.
What I can say is that we, we are consistently talking with Tech Dot, with our local folks, and reaching out when we get a chance to, the district folks in San Antonio, because it really is the way to kind of get that on that list, because they're like us. We have, we have 50, 100 projects, they have 50,000, right? And, and it does help, you know, the more and more that you talk about that, the more and more that's brought up. So we will continue to do that, because it's not an inexpensive thing to change that signalization for each one of those lights, but until you, until we talk it through and make that priority for them, it's, you know, it's managing that, those, you know, those priorities for them. So we'll continue to do that.
It's every day.
Well, you can catch your green lines, and the next one's red, and there's no, and Chief, I know that you see it all the time, and your guys and gals that are on the streets for us, but it's, it's just, wow.
I'm still waiting for the flying taxis, but it's, it's not soon enough.
Kyle, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at, does anybody see a need for an executive session? No? Okay.
We can talk about Joe while he's gone.
We can do that in open session.
He said, he said he's going to be watching, so.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second?